Dr. Cordellino.
Here.
Mrs. Fano. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Petrazzino. Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Sorry. Ms. Zuckerman. Mr. Daughtry.
Here.
Dr. Mo Druck. Mr. Bruckhauser. Ms. Patel.
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public and to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of any public bodies which are, at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record and the Montville Tap-into, the board's official newspapers, on February 2nd, 2025.
Our high school representative report.
Hi, everyone. As always, we'll start off with the past. So with sports, the boys varsity basketball team finished their season with a 21-6 record. The boys varsity ice hockey team finished their season with a 9-12-1 record. The girls varsity basketball team finished with a record of 9-16. Varsity wrestling ended off with a 20-6 record. All winter sports have now ended, and the spring sports will be starting their first practices on March 10th. Onto the school-related subjects. Girls' flag football had a meeting on the 21st of February for their spring season. The Mental Health Initiative invited all students and staff to come to the Media Center classroom during both halves of lunch on February 26th to meet Jamie and her therapy dog, Joanie. Everyone learned what therapy dogs do for their community and how they get certified. Tickets for the spring musical, Big Fish, have been on sale throughout the past two weeks. The musical will be performed March 6th through 9th in the auditorium. Everyone in the community is encouraged to attend. The International Concerns Club hosted a Chick-fil-A fundraiser night on February 26th from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. FBLA members had a guest speaker, Jake Kowalczek, come to speak to them on the 27th. Mr. Kowalczek spoke about his experiences in the business world and gave advice to all members of the club. Now onto the present. This morning, MTHS DECA left to go compete at Harrah's in Atlantic City for the State Career Development Conference. They will return on Thursday. The Class of 2025 is now collecting pictures and videos of the class from kindergarten through senior year to put together in a video montage. This video will be shown at the Senior Sunset scheduled for June 9th. All submissions are due by April 1st. And now onto the future. On March 7th, MTHS will be hosting a college fair, which will be an exciting opportunity for students to explore opportunities for their future. This Saturday, March 8th, MTHS will be an SAT testing site. Next week, FBLA will also be heading to Harrah's in Atlantic City for their state leadership conference. They will be gone from March 10th to 12th. During this time, all juniors will also be taking the NJGPA or a New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gorman.
Yes, well, you just pointed out the SAT testing sites. That's exciting. This is the second time we're offering it this year, and then we're going to hope to build upon that in the future. So it's great that we're able to offer these tests here at our home base here and have kids a little bit more comfortable as opposed to having to go to those schools. So we're real excited to be offering that. Thank you for that. So today is Woodmont Day. So Mr. Esposito and I, wearing our Read Across America ties, Dr. Seuss ties, I had a chance to go into some third and fourth grade classrooms and talk to the kids and read to them. It was so exciting and interacting with them. It's just a great day. I know some other administrators or some board members made there as well, and also other town officials as well. So it was a great day, very exciting for everybody, and we're just going to continue this well into the evening. Mr. Esposito.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman, and thank you, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity. So I apologize. So again, thank you, Dr. Gorman, and thank you, members of the board. We'd like to give us an opportunity to talk about one of our favorite topics, Woodmont School. So I'm going to introduce the stars of Woodmont's latest video. Woodmont Willie and Woodmont Wanda, No Time for Pie, the sequel to Woodmont Willie and the Isle of Amor. Guys would like to come up. They're going to present to you about our video program. I'd also like to introduce Mrs. Toni Ann Raj, Ms. Brianna Orfus, and Ms. Danielle Antunes, who are our adult coordinators for our videos. All right.
Woodmont School has been creating videos for the past 11 years. You can find us on YouTube at Pause the Wildcats. Our channel was created in the June of 2014.
Wow, that's almost as old as me. We have posted 51 videos, many of which are annual end-of-the-year videos and are much anticipated Valentine's Day videos. We have 653 subscribers and have almost 150,000 views.
Our viewership reaches all corners of the world, from people in the United Kingdom, India, Canada, Australia, Brazil, Spain, Italy, South Korea, Germany, Philippines, Denmark, Pakistan, Egypt, Vietnam, Mexico, Turkey, and Belgium.
While we love it when people like and subscribe to our channel, what we love most is making our videos. From the costumes to the props to the music and dancing, each year we try to outdo the last. Our videos offer a glimpse into our school to share how unique we truly are.
To be a part of our videos, we must follow our school's pause promises. Teachers select students who exhibit kindness, hard work, and good citizenship.
Our end-of-year videos include the entire school. Traditionally, fifth graders are selected to be featured lip dubbers. Lip dubbers are responsible for practicing their part and planning out their costume.
Filming has become a school-wide event that everyone looks forward to in June. Each class selects a theme, dresses in special outfits, gathers props, and practices. Our teachers work together behind the scenes to mix music, coordinate filming, edit, and promote our productions. It is truly a collaborative effort and a labor of love.
Let's take a look back to see how far we've come.
It's really fun seeing all your friends and that it's a good tradition that we do every year.
I think the Woodmont videos really help build morale and a sense of community at Woodmont, and it gives everyone an opportunity to be involved and see what great students we have here at Woodmont.
What I love about Woodmont videos is I feel like it takes a really good, big impact on Woodmont because a lot of students love this kindergarten to fifth grade. We all enjoy these things, and it also, it's so exciting to take part in all of them, and I really hope that Woodmont can make more videos in the future. Thank you, and goodbye Wildcats.
Just to add a few closing comments, I've been in this district for 10 years, and so you did the first video before I started. And we were using, in the earliest videos that you saw, we were using cell phones, and you know, our technology wasn't that great. Over time, we got better with editing. We started mixing music. Teaching ourselves had to do a lot of these things. With the support of the MEF and our PTA, we have been able to get editing software. Cameras that are GoPros that really help enhance our videos. And every year, we try and see what we can do next, and they've really evolved over time.
I'm not sure if everybody knows, but last year, Brianna and I spoke at Tech Expo down in Atlantic City, and our PD session was called Cultivating School Culture Through Video. So we were able to present to a wider audience of how we make our videos and what it's done for our school. And during that, while we were preparing for that, we sent out surveys to the community, to the parents, the students, the teachers, and just to see what everybody was feeling about it, and it was very positive. Huron spoke about how many countries the video reaches. That's because our community sends that to their families that live overseas. So that's why we're hitting that wider audience. And something that we've noticed, especially when we watch the videos, they serve as a video yearbook for a lot of our students. So in those first videos, we look at it and we say, oh, those kids are in college. And they get to go back and see. They have that proof of, you know, maybe they don't take a yearbook with them or they didn't purchase a yearbook, but these are on YouTube, and it's live and there for them to use. And then we've come from, in the beginning, staff and just members of the school community were a little reluctant to join. Now we have full buy-in. I don't know if you noticed, JJ was in our last video, JJ from IT. He came and we pied him. He's actually in a couple scenes. So we invite, David Tubbs was also in our last video. Sandy Schwartz was in our last video. So we try to invite everybody. If you want to be in a video, let us know. Our next one will start production in June. I want to turn it over to Daniello, who helped us kind of come around. She's our young blood. So she knows what's trending, and she helps Brianna and I with what the younger population wants to see.
Hello. So I started working at Woodmont about like four years ago, and I had my first look at a Woodmont video production of the 2022 lip dub. And after witnessing that, I thought, all right, my colleagues, could you use a little bit of young, youthful soul to this? And I knew that my background in technology and social media could seriously up the game for future productions. So what did I do? I came into Mr. Esposito's office with a full-on presentation of PowerPoint slides, themes, transition, and I mapped out a route, and it was like directing a Hollywood blockbuster up to the T. As a newbie on the team into the school, I can honestly say that these videos work a little bit of magic, transforming not just the students, but the staff too. They help create a school culture that's not just positive, it's contagious. There's something about seeing everyone come together and have fun that really brings the whole community to life, and there's nothing else to it. So, thank you.
God admit, it was a heck of a pitch. I mean, I really got a feeling of being a producer, listening to Daniello when she made her pitch. I think for my final point, the most important thing why these are so important to us, it was touched on a little bit by Toni Ann and by one of our students in the video. But I want you to keep in mind that each one of these videos is actually a piece of history. And thankfully, due to the power of YouTube, they'll always be there. And when our children become adults, and they're having their own families, and they want to reflect on their school days, how amazing is it that they don't have to try to dig up boxes or find crates or look for photo albums? They can just now go to YouTube, type in Pause the Wildcat, and pull up a multitude of videos, and they can say, these were my friends, that was my principal, these were my teachers, this was my school. And it just brings back a flood of memories and connections. I mean, of course, it does a great job promoting what we do here at Woodmont and at the Montville Township Public Schools. But I think the better meaning, what has greater deeper meaning, is the fact that our children now have a record that they can go back to, and I think that is so impactful. And I know, talking to our alumni, our older students who, you know, are in high school and college, they've come back to us, and every couple of months, we put out something new. It just triggers a conversation and a moment of, hey, let's go back and watch these, and hey, do you remember this? Do you remember that? And that's very powerful, and that's a wonderful thing to do. So we deeply appreciate that the board and the district has been so supportive over the years in promoting our mission, and it just really means a lot for us. And we'll continue to do them for as long as we're on board because they mean so much to our students and our staff. So we thank you very much.
Beautiful job. Dr. Cordellino and I were just talking earlier this evening about the beauty of the neighborhood schools is each one has their own culture, and each one does something special. Woodmont is known for the Read Across America and also these videos. And it's just wonderful. We had them both in one day, and you could show this. We pass the videos around to the board. We pass them on to everybody. We see who the 007 stars are of this year's, you know, video. So it's just wonderful stuff. And exactly like you said, now we have a treasure trove of these video libraries of all the past things, and it's just wonderful to see. So congratulations. We look forward to many more in the future.
Can I just make a comment? So first, thanks for coming. I thoroughly enjoy your videos. And I've always wondered how they got made, and now I know. And just talking about A Flood of Memories, that first one, Smile, brought back a flood of memories for me of people and people that have passed on. So, thank you.
And if I could say this, I think some of those later videos almost had like a little bit of an MTV vibe to it. And, but you said it was just a performance-type thing, a major production. And I think in that resolve, it does kind of tie into the whole performing arts type of thing. And it gives you a sense of doing these types of things. And if I remember correctly, I thought I read that three Woodmont students are in Big Fish this week. Is that correct? Yeah. So, you know, I think a lot of that is a carryover where you get the performing arts bug in you, and, you know, there you are. So, you know, good work and keep on with it.
So we're going to take all these Emmy Award-winning people and put them in front of the big screen here.
Yeah, EGOTs.
All right, Woodmont students. I know tonight's a school night. You got homework, so you're allowed to leave if you wish. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to. All right, just moving along, I just have two announcements. Just sharing our MEDLIC program. MEDLIC enrichment, that is things that we're offering throughout the school year for the MEDLIC students, as well as we're going to be offering more and more during the summer. They successfully finished math games for Grade 2. Students across the district had a blast learning math through games. We were offering four new courses through this whole winter session. Gamified Geography, Math Games for Grade 2, Math Games for Grade 3, and Coding. Bill the Juggler came to all five of the MEDLIC programs. Parents and students love that we offered a special program during the MEDLIC hours, and we're looking to offer a couple more this year. Holiday MEDLIC was also a success. That was over the different holidays. And we've opened it up this year for Rosh Hashanah, Diwali, and Teachers Convention. And there's still room for Eid and Spring Break if people want to sign up for that, and we'll run MEDLIC during those sessions as well. At the high school level, something that's happened that's relatively new, and we've been doing it probably for the past two years or so, more colleges are coming to the schools and interviewing students on the spot and giving them instant decisions. So not all the seniors decided to act upon the acceptance, but at least these were offered by these schools. So just this year alone, we had Drew University come. We had six students participate. All were accepted, and about $38,000 in scholarships were offered on the spot right there. Seton Hall, we had seven students participate, and again, scholarships between $25,000 and $35,000. FDU had five students applied. Four were accepted on the spot. One was deferred. NJIT, nine applied, nine accepted. Quinnipiac, four students applied, three accepted. One was awaiting a decision. Montclair, 10 students applied, 10 accepted. Monmouth, five applied, five accepted. Ramapo, 11 applied, 10 accepted, one awaiting a decision. And Caldwell College had two students applied and two accepted, and they were offering up to $40,000 in scholarship money. So again, not every student takes advantage of all this, but it's really nice to know. It takes the pressure off, knowing you're instantly decided upon, and more colleges are doing that. We're going to be inviting them in. And it's just another measure of success with our school system. And that's my report.
Thank you, Tom. Katina, anything from the business office?
No report.
Okay, moving on to Section G, Committee Reports. Finance, Karen?
Thank you, Joe. We met shortly before tonight's meeting. We went through items on the upcoming 25-26 budget. And I just have to note how thoroughly the business office and Mrs. Slunt goes through the prospective budget. She takes it line by line, stretching every dollar and squeezing every nickel to make our budget work. And I'm saying that, I know there's no one here in our audience, but I do know that people watch. I want people to know that year to year, we just don't, you know, turn the page, and this year's budget becomes next year's budget with, you know, some increase. The lines are being evaluated very, very carefully. And I want everybody to know that. A lot of work goes into creating each year's budget, and I am very appreciative to Mrs. Slunt and her business office.
Thank you. Curriculum. There's a meeting coming up, I believe, on the 25th. Policy, John's not here. Communications, Caitlin, you want to?
Sure. We met on February 26th and went over the various communication methods that the district uses, such as Montville Moments, the Superintendent's Column, Community Connections. And we were able to see the backend of the website, where you can tell where our email newsletters are being opened all around the world. So that was very cool to see, and how quickly people open them. Within the first 11 minutes, there was, over 1,000 people had already opened up the Montville Moments to read it. So that was good feedback to see. We are looking into new platforms to broaden our communication, including be able to share videos and remain ADA compliant because Thrill Share does not allow the video sharing right now. After the successful pilot of Google Classroom, we're moving towards that instead of using SchoolAG. And we're looking to roll out iMontville, which will be an initiative to allow us to capture the great ideas and programs that we have throughout the district. And then we discussed the new software, Gaggle, and how that has been implemented in the schools and the feedback we've seen from that.
Just to follow up on that. So yesterday, we sent out a letter to the community about Gaggle, Go Guardian, and the other tools that we monitor, the digital platforms that the students are on. We hope that clarified a lot of the questions that were out there. Last week, rumors ran amok at the high school about what was going on, and it was all rumors. So we just felt we had to just clarify a little bit more about what we're doing currently and what we have been doing for years. So I know it's still relatively new. We're all getting accustomed to this, but all these measures are being put in place for the safety of the students.
Thank you. Safety and security, Christine.
Yes, so Christine asked me to do the readout for our meeting. We met on February 19th. And a lot of these issues or a lot of these items that we went through have been discussed in other reports. So I'll just go quickly through them. First, we did talk about the hiring of the Special Law Enforcement Officer as the SLEO for the elementary schools, and that he started on February 19th. And he's going to be doing a rotation through all five schools on a random basis or as needed basis. So with the addition of that SLEO, plus the ones in Lazar and at the high school and the SRO, and the normal police patrols, there's a very large presence of police around our district, around our schools. So they're always visible, no matter where we're going on in our schools. We also talked about the security vestibules. And we talked about that the Valley View vestibule is nearing completion. And then the high school, Woodmont, Hildale, and Lee Mason will be completed over the summer. Under evaluation is a new visitor ID system that's going to be installed at the schools is to help streamline the process of getting people through the security vestibules and into the schools if it's appropriate for them to come in. The visitor ID system is going to be something similar to what you may have seen at a gated communities like in Florida, whatever, you take your driver's license, put it into the machine, they'll scan it, and then it will let you in if, if, if you're approved to, to, to come in. So as that gets fully evaluated and any issues are worked out, then that will get rolled out in the coming months. We also did talk about the Gaggle software, but as, as Tom just mentioned, email went out on Monday that pretty well explained what is, what is happening with that, that system. And other than that, we did talk about other issues about what we could do in the future. So it is, let's just look through my notes. There, a lot of it did deal with security training and tabletop exercises with the police to train the administration on what to do in certain situations or emergency situations so people are better prepared to handle them. Yeah, and that's, that's the report.
Thank you, Mike. Going on to Delegate Liaisons, Karen, School Boards?
So on February 7th, I sat on the Nominating Committee. The Nominating Committee selected five board members, candidates for a slate of officers, which includes the President, the Vice President of County Activities, the Vice President of Finance, and the Vice President of Legislation. This will, on May 10th, that will conclude my term. And it certainly has been an immense honor and experience of a lifetime to serve as the association's president. I will remain an officer as the immediate past president after that time. The elections of the rest of the officers will take place at the May 10th Delegate Assembly. The association put out a press release regarding a new white paper. The Committee on Educational Opportunities for the Career Focused Learner issued its final report, New Dimensions in Career and Technical Education. The report is the result of six months of research, discussion, and review by the committee, which was charged with reviewing and updating the work of the 2018 Task Force on Educational Opportunities for the Non-College Bound Learner. There are 29 recommendations that came out of the report. I would encourage you to, if nothing else, just skim it. It really does show how far we've come and how far we need to go for those youngsters that don't want to pursue a college career. The association held its second new Board Member Orientation on February 21st through the 22nd. And I did have an opportunity to make some remarks to the new board members. On February 25th, I was very excited and thrilled to attend the Governor's Budget Address. It truly is democracy at work, it was very inspiring. And as Dr. Gorman put in his weekly update, I also listened in to Attorney, to Attorney General Plackton's discussion on federal education updates. It was very, very informative and very, it was reassuring. The general is certainly on top of what's happening and understands it well, as, as he should as our Attorney General.
I just want to jump in right there, just the one point that he made was, they always have to be reactive. They have to wait until certain things are done and then they could launch a lawsuit or react or do something like that. So they can prepare schools or the communities for whatever may be coming, but they always have to wait and then they can take action, depending on whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a very good, a very good point, Tom. And we've been hearing that from our own attorney. So thank you, Steve. I think that concludes my report. I'll have a couple of other things later on regarding some offerings to municipalities from New Jersey School Boards, but I'll do that during General Board Discussion.
And I just wanted to say, Karen's done an incredible job being the President. She's so active. She made it a personal goal to go to all 21 counties and you don't realize how long New Jersey is until you try to get to all 21 counties and get all the way down there. But she did that over the course of the year. She, you know, has gone to the state of the state, addresses by Governor Murphy several years now. And she's been at a lot of different events that I attend and then she's attending and then all these different things. And she always does it with a smile, so I want to thank you for that. I know it's very tiring. You also have a full-time job and you're a volunteer on the Board of Ed and you're doing this. So it's, there's a lot stacked up there, so I appreciate that and you helped put Monville on the map there. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
That's very generous.
School Board Association, Morris County, Michael?
No report.
Can I ask you guys something? The next meeting for Morris County School Boards is, I think, April 2nd? And it's in, at Morris Knowles, it's in person, not hybrid. Want carpool? I'll drive.
I'll be there, I'm attending.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's work that out, let's carpool. We have three of us, I mean, that's, that'd be great.
You know what day of the week that is?
I think it's a Wednesday. Was that a joke?
That's not a joke.
I think it's a Wednesday.
Edge Services Commission, there's a meeting next Wednesday at 6:30. Drug Awareness, they're going to have a meeting with the administration. Two members of the council are going to meet to discuss the pilot program. That meeting will take place next week as well. And the next DAC meeting will be on the 11th at 7 o'clock. John is not here. Liaisons, Cedar Hill?
They haven't had a meeting, but they will be having a meeting on March 11th. It'll, it'll be virtual. But the, the students have been working on a play, The Wizard of Oz, and I plan to attend on March 8th.
Thank you. Caitlin, Valley View?
The next meeting is virtual on March 19th, that's it.
Thank you. Woodmont, Mike?
The next meeting is virtual on March 10th.
Lazar's next meeting I have down here is Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 PM. High School?
And no report.
Thank you. Section 8, Public Participation for Any Items on the Agenda. Right up, say your name.
There we go, good. Since I'm the only one here, I just wanted to, oh, sorry, Hannah Jinks. What do I need to say? Address, 8 Boot Nav. And I have three children at William Mason and one home with me. I have fifth grader, third grader, and kindergartner. I just wanted to express appreciation for the email about Gaggle. Am I saying it right, Gaggle? I do not envy your all's position and everyone behind the scenes making decisions as far as security goes in this day and age. It's really scary as a parent to be handing my child a Chromebook and to hear the horror stories. But there's a reason why those stories make it into the media because they are the, not the norm. And so I'm well aware of that. I thought the initiate, like the initial email and the initial presentation of the changes was helpful and informative. I did see the backlash on that and it, I understand it happens and there's confusion and stuff like that. But as someone who tends to be an over communicator, I liked the follow-up email. And I also felt like the follow-up email was helpful and informative. And there's never going to be a perfect system, but I really appreciate all of the efforts that you guys are all going to and am supportive of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and thanks for coming out and commenting in the, in the past. And thank you for the Valentine's cards I got from the, from the children, they were beautiful, so.
Yeah, that was actually a kindness, part of a kindness initiative at William Mason. I know John's not here tonight to do that, but in February, our school counselor, Ms. Gorga, put out a kindness challenge for the kids and it was like 100 kind things they could do over the month and write a note of appreciation to our superintendent was one of them.
That was awesome, thank you. Made my day, made my day. It's actually made my year, so I got, I'm holding on to them, so.
What, the conversation we had at home was, he probably doesn't get a lot of thank you, so we should probably do that.
I might hold on to them for next year too, so.
Moving on to Consent Resolutions, I to N, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about Section I? Section J? Section K? Section L? Section M? Section N? Can I get a vocal?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
I just want to comment on Section L, we have one retirement. We have Pam Gray. She's a dedicated and compassionate kindergarten paraprofessional. She's at Cedar Hill School for nearly 20 years. Throughout her career, she has played an invaluable role in supporting young learners, fostering their growth, and creating a warm, nurturing classroom environment. Her patience, kindness, and unwavering commitment to student success have left, have left a lasting impact on countless teachers, children, and families. Pam's dedication to Cedar Hill School will be greatly missed, but her legacy of care, support, will continue to inspire for years to come, so we wish her well.
Section P, I don't think we had to go back into closed session. Section Q, Old Business? And Section R, General Board Comments?
Yeah, so like I mentioned earlier, you know, we belong to the ACES Program, the Alliance for Competitive Energy Services. This is a New Jersey School Boards program. And they are, we are now going to invite municipalities to join ACES. They never had before, didn't extend that invitation before. But it's a way to save on energy costs. So they'll be getting an invitation to join, so hopefully further discussion will ensue. And then just, I feel really proud to be served on the Monville Board of Education. And, you know, reading Dr. Gorman's weekly update, this past one, it's just, it's amazing. We had teachers come from other districts to watch our teachers implement the new Amplify System. And they were so excited to talk to our teachers. Then you hosted, Dr. Gorman, a think tank of about 12 superintendents, which is, you know, bringing people together like that is, wonderful things can come out of it. You know, and then finally, you mentioned you had been to the Attorney General's Discussion Zoom Meeting, so thank, thank you.
These meetings are extremely important. We probably had about 20-something visitors and we had another one a few months back at Hilldale as well. So to see these other people from other schools come in, see what's going on, they're so appreciative of that and it's just a great way to interact with other colleagues because a lot of teachers don't get out as much because they're so dedicated to what's going on in the classroom. So these are very worthwhile opportunities. And the superintendents, you know, after you get all the, you know, venting out of the way, you know, you try to solve the problems because we're all up against the same issues, so. And honestly, a couple of them are maybe turning it to some fruition. We might be able to bring in some students that maybe for special ed, for some of the programs we have here. We're talking about some busing solutions, some ways to maybe save some money too, so we'll see.
Yeah, well, thank you for taking the time to do that and the other superintendents as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Section S, Public Participation, for any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, can I motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.